Jonathan, it's your show.
Evening. My name is Jonathan Mount and I'm the zoning officer for Haverford Township. I'd like to call it ordered with special reorganization meeting at the Haverford Township zoning hearing board this Thursday, January 16th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We'll proceed with the roll call. Mr. Page, she.
Here.
Mr. Point.
Here.
Ms. Vitale.
Here.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Kane.
Here.
Now open the floor for nominations for the chairman of Haverford Township zoning hearing board for 2025. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Kane as chairman of the board for 2025.
A second. Yep, my second.
Any questions on the motion? Nominations are closed. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chairman of the zoning hearing board of Haverford Township, Mr. Robert Kane. I now hand over the meeting to the chairman.
And thank you, guys. It means a lot. And I enjoy sitting in the center seat. So with that, we'll move on to vice chairman. Is there a nomination for a vice chair?
I would like to.
Oh, go ahead, Jesse.
Uh, no, good.
I was gonna say, I would like to vote for Bill Rhodes to continue as vice chairman.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Motion to close?
Motion to close.
I'll second it. All in favor of closing?
Aye.
All in favor of Bill Rhodes as vice chair?
Aye.
Alright. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Is there a nomination for secretary?
I would nominate Ms. Vitale.
I'll second that.
Any other nomination? Motion to close?
Motion to close.
I'll second it. All in favor of closing the nominations?
Aye.
And all in favor of Jessica Vitale as our secretary?
Aye.
Congrats, Jess. Is there a motion to appoint or reappoint, as the case may be, our solicitor for the year 2025?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Ernie Angelos as our solicitor for 2025.
I'll second that. Are there any other nominations? I know we have several resumes. I won't do it to you. So that motion with Jessica and this.
Make a motion.
Second was Jesse.
Uh, yeah.
I'll second that. All in favor of closing?
Aye.
Aye.
Jesse. All in favor of Ernie?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome back, Ernie. Kick your butt off here, please. Is there a motion to report a court stenographer year 2025?
I would make a motion to appoint Arlene LaRosa.
I'll second that.
Any other nomination? Motion to close?
So moved.
I'll second it.
In favor of closing? Aye.
Aye.
All in favor of Arlene? Aye. Welcome back, Arlene.
Keep typing.
Don't pack up and go anywhere. A motion to appoint a primary and secondary newspaper for 2025?
I think we have traditionally, and the township has used the Delaware County Daily Times as our primary newspaper, and the News of Delaware County is our secondary newspaper. So I'd make a motion to appoint those as our newspapers of record.
I'll second that.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Someone wanna make the motion to set our 2025 calendar of meetings? I suppose I should read the dates into the record. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to set the following 2025 calendar of meetings for the zoning board. January 16th, January 30th, which is a special hearing that we've already scheduled, February 6th and 20th, March 6th and 20th, April 3rd and 17th, May 1st and 15th, June 5th, July 17th, August 21st, September 4th and 18th, October 16th, November 6th and 20th, December 4th and 18th.
I'll make a motion to set the calendar.
I'll second that motion.
And the meetings to convene at?
7:45 PM.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that concludes the reorganization meeting of the Haverford Township zoning hearing board for the year 2025. So we're gonna adjourn the reorganization meeting.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting.
Before we do that, we will commence our regular meeting at 7:45. So there's a motion and a second to adjourn. I'll second it. In favor? Aye. Alright, we're adjourned.
Court, order the meeting of the Haverford Township zoning hearing board Thursday, January 16th, 2025.
President at the front table, to my far left is Jessica Vitale, a voting member. Next to Jessica is Ed McGargy, a voting member. My immediate left, Ernie Angelos, our solicitor.
Good evening.
To my right, Bill Rhodes, a voting member.
Good evening.
Jesse Pointon, a voting member.
Good evening.
And Jonathan Mount, our zoning officer. We have one continued, two continued, three continued, three continued and one new case. Before we begin, let's do the pledge. Bill, would you?
Please, Rob, can you repeat after me?
We just live in America. It's a good republic. It just stands. One nation of the individual. The liberty of justice is strong.
Our first listed case is something we can dispose of rather quickly. It's KZ 24-38. Sean and Casey Power, owners of 17 Ellis Road, Haverford Town, PA, DC Folio number 22030096600, who seek a variance from the provisions of Section 182206C6A to allow a porch roof to be constructed within one foot two inches of the property line, where the required side yard setback is eight feet. The roof encroaches six feet 10 inches into the required setback. Property is owned R4 and located in the 3rd.
And you indicated, Mr. Chairman, that's gonna be continued to February 6th. Just for the record, I did receive an email from the applicant's attorney, Mr. Jim Byrne. I understand the applicant is ill and would be the one that would provide most for the bulk of the testimony this evening. So Mr. Byrne asked for a continuance. In addition to that, he waived all the applicable time constraints under the MPC and the township's code to allow us to continue this matter.
Thank you, Ernie. So unless there's an objection or discussion required by one of my fellow boardmates, we'll continue that case to February 6th, 2025.
I think we did discuss the issue that continuing this case further would not probably be advisable, since it's in a structure that's already been instructed. So I don't know if we can limit that in the future.
Board can do what it wants in that regard. Should there be another continuance, maybe the request at that time is to have somebody here to present and request it in person.
Thank you.
Our next case is Z 24-41. Mina Lala and Parag K. Lala, owners of 106 North Drexel Avenue, Haverford Town, PA, DC Folio number 22090063500, who seek a variance from the provisions of Section 182204C7 to allow a 19-foot setback for a deck where 25 feet is required. Property is owned R2 and located in the 9th Ward. Please come forward. How are you? And you can stand right at the podium?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay. And I need to swear you in, so please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
And your full name and address for the record?
Mina Lala, 106 North Drexel Avenue, Haverford, 19083.
Okay, so Mina, you submitted an application to the township and you had certain documents attached to your application. I'm sure you're gonna want refer to them throughout your presentation. So they need to be marked and identified for the record as exhibits. So if you have your packet with you. If you just go through it, we're happy to help you through that process if you need help with it. But which of these attachments to your application, and if you have any additional that are not attached to your application incidentally, would you like to refer to throughout your presentation?
Mr. Chairman, I took the liberty while we were sitting here and actually pulled out sections of the applications that I would ask to see if the applicants would wanna utilize, and I marked them as exhibits to kinda help move this along.
Okay.
Wanna come up real quick? See if this is which one. These are what I took out of the application. So this is a deed. I think you probably want that to identify that you own the property. This, I'm assuming, is your plan?
Yes.
Okay. So you wanna use that. And then this is what looks like the Delaware County property record card. So just the county's records says it relates to your property. Okay. And then that's the document. There's three pages and then.
This is what I was showing.
And this is a picture of the back of your house?
Yeah, this, this one.
Okay. Okay. Well, we can talk about it, but this, we'll let you do it. You wanna use this as well?
Yes.
Alright, so what we'll do is I'll identify, let me identify for the record just quickly the exhibit, and then I'll hand this to you.
Okay.
So that you can utilize this. When you're talking about an exhibit, make sure you identify what exhibit you're talking about. For the record, Mr. Chairman, Exhibit A1 is a copy of the applicant's deed identifying that they're the owners of the property, as we were standing. A2 is a copy of the, looks to be a plan prepared. Did you prepare this or have?
Uh, I had my builder, you know, subcontractor.
So it's a plan of the.
But then I kind of did it on.
Yeah, it's a plot plan, essentially. A3 is the Delaware County property record card confirmation. It consists of three pages. I marked that A3, A3.1 and A3.2. And then finally, there appears to be a picture of rear yard, which we are going to identify as A4. That way you can use these exhibits, you know, what you're trying to talk about. Sure.
So, Mina, you heard our solicitor's description of your exhibit. Do you agree with his description?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay, and I'm sure you'd like to have those admitted into the record, right?
Yes, please, yeah.
So they're admitted, A1 through 4. Now that we've gone through the formalities, please tell us a little bit about what you would like to do and.
Well, we hired someone to build an extension. So he got all the permits for the additional room and bathroom and all we needed to add on the first floor. And he built a door and proposed a deck in the backyard, since we have no access to the back, you know, from the main floor. We can only go from the basement. So that was a year, over a year ago. And when he didn't work on the deck at all, finally, he told me that I needed to apply for a variance because I assumed he knew that we could build a deck and that we had enough of the easement, like 25. I mean, I didn't know any regulations. So when I came here, I, you know, people here were nice enough, Mr. Mount and Margie, to give me all the material I needed to apply for a variance for. So right now, if you build a deck, so right now I have a room that, with a door that opens to nowhere, it's like a 13-foot drop, because there's the basement and then the top above the garage is where he built it. So so there's a door there. We need some access to the outside. And if we just build a 12-by-16 deck, I would need to apply for the variance because I won't have the 25 feet remaining. I'd have to take six from there to make, make a 12-foot wide deck and so it's, it's a small deck, 12 by 16. And the reason I put the picture with the trees and bushes and shrubs all in there is just to show that it doesn't, where the proposed deck is, it doesn't overlook directly into the neighbor's yard. And I'm assuming that nobody came up with any objection, but I don't know.
So the way this works is when you're done, your presentation, I'm sure a board members will have a question for you.
Yes.
So when you're done, just tell me.
Okay, I guess I'm done because we really do need that five or six feet just to have some access instead of having a 7-by-16 deck, to have a 12-by-16, which will be usable. Otherwise, it'll just be like a little balcony into, you know, nowhere. So that's, that's the reason we hope that the board, you know, agrees to giving us that variance.
Okay.
And I guess.
Jessica?
Just to confirm, the 12-foot depth is, in your opinion, the minimum that you need to make the deck work?
Yes, please, yeah, yeah.
And right now, you only have an exit?
Seven. I have seven.
You have seven?
Yeah. I mean, right now I have 32 feet from where, you know, the back of the house to the property line. So if I, you know, if I take out the 25 feet, then I just have a seven foot.
Okay. And right now, you only have one exit from the first floor of your house, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Into the front yard, and you'd have to go into the basement to exit out?
Yes, yeah.
I don't have any other questions right now, Bob.
Jesse?
When looking at Exhibit A4, which is the photo of the back, you made reference to a door to nowhere. Is that visible on the top right of the photo?
I think there's like a ladder leaning against it and the door is just right above it.
And how many feet above the ground did you say that that was?
I think it's about, the garage is about 12, 12 feet and then, you know, he added some more.
So it's an entire story above the ground?
Yes, yeah, it's an entire story, yeah.
So this would be an elevated deck?
Yes.
Okay. And then there would be space below the deck?
Yes, and that'll be just green space. I mean, there's grass there, so we'll just leave it.
And sometimes we, we put, what is the word I'm trying to? Condition. We put conditions on approval. So if we were to grant this, would you accept a condition that you would not enclose the space below the deck?
Yes, yeah.
And would you also approve a condition that you would not enclose the deck permanently by building walls and a roof above it?
Yes, yeah.
And what, what kind of utilities would you be looking to put? Would you be looking to put just electric?
Just electric, yeah.
Just electric. And would that be a condition that you would be okay with accepting? That it would just be electric?
I guess so, yeah, right now, yeah.
Okay. And let's see. And would there be steps that go down from the deck down to the yard, right?
No, I think for safety, we'd rather not have steps going from the back leading to the house anywhere. So it'll just be like a raised deck with no steps.
Okay. But there was, you had testified that there was no other way to access the backyard, but you, so, but you can go out, straight out the back? From the, from the, what you referred to as the basement?
I'd have to go down the steps into the basement and then out through the back, you know, there's a door that.
Is your house on a slope? Is the front door?
Yes, it's on a slope, yes.
I understand. I don't have any other questions at this time.
Ed?
So it's not that you need access to your backyard. It's that you need a deck to utilize or additional space. Because you could put a landing in stairs that would not require any variances.
I'm thinking long-term, we built the additional, you know, the bedrooms and bathroom and everything on that floor. So then I cannot go up and down the stairs.
But would you, would you say that you created the hardship? Were you created the situation by adding the addition on, not giving you enough room for the deck?
No, no, actually, we added the addition to make the house so we don't have to use the upstairs bedroom. If we want to, we can use. Like, when my husband had knee surgery, we couldn't sort of, I mean, he couldn't go up the, you know, the second floor bedroom. So at that, that time, I mean, we needed that. We built that space, so if we have such emergencies, we have access to a bedroom and a bathroom and, like, living space all on the same floor.
Okay, I understand.
So that's, yeah, that's why we.
But by adding the additional, you no longer have the 25-foot setback if you build a deck?
Yes, the setback would be just 19, 19 feet.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Bill?
Now, my questions were asked by the others, so thank you.
And so we're done. Is there anything else you would like to add, Mina?
Yeah, I mean, if we don't get that deck there, then I'll have to spend extra money to close the door and, you know, like, it'll be, it'll be like a house which I feel like, I, I know it's unfair to kind of ask you all to give give us variance when our builder should have known that it's not possible, you know, that he should have told us that, you know, I assumed he would know all the regulations. So it's after the fact and it's almost like we didn't have a choi, we didn't have a choice at that point. So but then again, I mean, it's easy to blame someone else. Maybe I should have, I don't know what I should have done, but so he kind of, you know, put us in a position where we'll have to spend extra money to then, you know, redo the, the whole thing.
Have you talked to your builder about this problem and that if you couldn't get a variance and you would need to seal over the space that's been framed out for a door, that they should pay that?
He was very good the first few months. And then I have to call him like 15, he, there's a lot of stuff he still hasn't finished, but I'm trying to, you know, be patient and see, like, deal with one thing at a time. I guess those Yelp reviews didn't tell me much. That's the problem.
There they go.
By those reviews, and we haven't lived here long enough to even, you know, like, later I found out different people who had used different, you know, other builders.
Understood. Okay. No other question? Jess?
Do you know if any of your neighbors have similar additions and deck in their rear yards?
Yes. Similar and maybe much larger than what I'm, you know, like I mean, yeah, yes. Every house has a deck there, you know?
In the back?
Yeah, like raised deck. Because that whole street almost like slopes down both sides, you know, so.
Would you say that your next-door neighbor, or your neighbors on either side, do they have raised?
Yes.
Raised decks? They do? And do they have similar-sized additions on the back that you put on?
The neighbor, I think, on, I'm facing this. The neighbor, one, one side, the neighbor has a raised deck which goes much further than what I'm proposing. And the other side, the deck is on the garage, which is maybe what the original structure was. But one of them. And then the one behind me has a raised deck and, and a finished structure, like the one we have done. So there are, I think, two houses that have that and one has a deck on the garage, the sloping garage.
Right, thank you.
I, I'll ask. Have you talked to your neighbors about your request for this variance and are they okay with it?
They're okay with it. My neighbor across the street is a civil engineer and he was like, oh, you should have told me before. I said, oh, it's too late. I didn't know that he was a civil engineer. But, you know, like, I don't think any of them have, would have any, I mean, I don't think so, because some of them have decks that are.
So you've only talked to the neighbor across the street?
Yeah, and the one on the side, I mean, they know and then, I like, I didn't talk to the one on the behind because I mean, you know, the, I assume the notice has been there long enough. So I did see people stand and read it. And like, you know, they're wondering what's going on here. So I, you know, since nobody objected, I'm assuming they didn't, so.
And the people directly behind you from your photo, it looks like they won't be able to see it anyway.
They won't be able to see it and they have a raised deck to, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that it comes all the way there, but, you know, so I don't think they would.
Okay. Can I ask just one, one last question?
Sure.
On A4, it looks like the rear, the rear property line is where the power line runs?
Yes, yeah, the.
And so this space here where it looks like there's a bag of mulch and some cans, is that pavement or is that just very short lawn?
I'm sorry.
Is this a paved area here? It, it looks like on yours, it looks more like grass.
Talking about this area right here. It says paved?
That's paved.
Okay.
Okay, just a little square here.
So where the tank was, I think, the, would it come back?
Yep.
The post? Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other questions? Jesse?
No other.
Alright, with that, I'll ask if there's anyone present that received certified mail that wishes to testify? Anyone that received regular mail, any other residents of Haverford Township? With that, we'll close the record on this case and a decision will be rendered at our next regularly scheduled meeting on February 6th.
Chairman, if we could, can I get this exhibit back for the record?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, just wanted to try it. Great, yes. Thank you.
So that's it?
Thank you for your time.
On February 6th, we'll do our decision. I mean, we may try tonight, but if we're unable to do it tonight because we get late, then February 6th would be the decision.
You can always, you can always call the township tomorrow to see if the board rendered a decision this evening. Otherwise, the chairman said it would be on February 6th.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have a good night, Mina. Our next case is Z 24-43. Nellie Smout, owner of 2704 Chestnut Avenue, Ardmore, PA, DC Folio number 22060063400, who seeks a variance from Section 182204B1 to create two single-family residences on a single parcel where only one is permitted. The property is owned R6 and located in the 6th Ward. How you doing?
Good, how you doing?
Chairman, I'm assuming the etiquette is that the, you put the attorneys in the, in the corner?
Just for questioning, but you can enter your appearance wherever you want and.
That's fine.
If it pleases the board, good evening. My name is Peter Mylonis and Supreme Court ID number 52562, and I'm representing the applicant Scott Meehan and his wife Nicole Meehan. They are the successors and interests to the initially filed application. So we're stepping into the shoes of the former owners. And what I provided to the board are the, as part of the exhibits, the fact that the initial zoning hearing board petition that was filed by the prior owner and then the proof of posting by the prior owner. Exhibit 3 was the survey of the premises and then Exhibit 4 is the deed of when the prior owner took title back in 2016. Exhibit 5 is the deed when this applicant, now before you, Scott and Nicole Meehan, purchased the property from that predecessor applicant. And and then Exhibit 6 is the tenant occupied property addendum to the agreement of sale that was the subject between the predecessor and the current applicant. And then the Haverford Township rental license is Exhibit 7. 8 is the residential lease agreement for that rear unit. Eight is the residential lease agreement for that rear unit. And exhibit nine, which you testified to, are the photographs depicting the, the subject rear unit at issue. The application, as you understand it, is that it's for zoning variance from Section 182-204B1 to create two single family residences on a single parcel where only one is permitted. You will hear testimony that essentially this, this was a mill house, a detached mill house way back when on this parcel and apparently the predecessor in interest or the, the owner prior to him converted that mill house into a 500 square foot studio apartment. And a couple of housekeeping matters to attend to. The successor applicant here, Scott and Nicole Meehan, are stepping into the shoes as to the waiver of the time constraints because I know the initial applicant had done that. So I'm putting it on the record that we too agree to those terms as well. Thank you. As second item of housekeeping, apparently the prior owner, initial applicant, had paid the township, the application fee for this proceeding, $550, but I was told apparently they put a stop payment on it. So my client will make immediate arrangements to have that paid to the township and cure that issue as well.
You, you mean after the hearing?
Well, technically, well, now this evening, well, prior to tonight's session concluding. In other words, while you're in the last application, my client can go home and retrieve a check.
Yeah, I got it.
And, and lastly, in terms of housekeeping, we are not necessarily adopting the initial applicant prior, you know, the predecessor's commentary on his application as far as his argument for economic hardship, we're not taking that position, we're not adopting what the prior owner was saying. So that, those are not our words. And with that.
Okay, you're gonna call Scott? You're gonna call him as a witness?
Yes.
And your name?
Scott Meehan.
Scott, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, God be God?
I do.
And your full name and address for the record, please?
Scott Meehan, 2704 Chestnut Ave, Ardmore, PA, 19003.
Okay, go ahead, Peter.
Thank you. Mr. Meehan, when, when did you first become aware of the prior owner having made this zoning application for that, that rear unit?
Sometime in early November, I believe, or late October, it was.
2024?
20, 2024, yes, sir.
Okay. And when you entered in the agreement of sale with the prior owner, was the rear detached unit mentioned in any way?
It was listed in the MLS listing, I believe, as a, you know, a, a rear unit that was bringing in income, had some sort of tenant in there and that's about the, the gist of what we knew about the back unit.
Okay. And directing your attention to the exhibit packet that we provided to the panel, exhibit two is the, the posting of the zoning application on the premises, that, that's.
Yes, sir.
Verified, all right. And then directing your attention to exhibit three, this is the survey of your property depicting the plot plan?
Yes, sir.
And it's on this survey, there's a mention of garage. If you can explain, explain to the panel, what is, is this the, that mill house in question?
Yeah, so from what we've figured out, being in the area for about a month now, a little less than a month, talking to a neighbor across the street, she said that, you know, her uncle lived there back in the day and it used to be an old mill house, you know, speaks to Ardmore and Havertford Township's local community, but, you know, said that it was an, an old mill house and didn't mention anything about it being converted or what time, but, and then off to the edge of what is listed as the garage is a, just a little shed kind of for storage off to the, the, the right of the garage area, so.
This is one contiguous detached space?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And our understanding is it's, is pre-existing non-conforming in terms of setbacks and whatnot, correct?
I believe so.
Okay. And turning your attention to exhibit four, this is the deed of the, from your predecessor, from the seller that you purchased from?
Yes.
Excuse me, I, I'll, I'll rephrase that. This is the deed from the seller when he acquired the property in 2016, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And next exhibit five is the, your deed from the predecessor on December 9th, 2024, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then exhibit six?
Yeah, that's, I believe that's from the predecessor, yes.
Yeah.
Correct, yep.
Exhibit six is the part of the agreement of sale you had with the predecessor owner, tenant occupied property addendum?
Correct.
And when was, when did you become aware that there was some sort of issue with the township as far as the legality of that second living space?
Don't know exact date, but probably sometime in November, we were made aware that there was some issue with the, the property and my realtor sits on a, a zoning board in Montgomery Township and had mentioned that, you know, we would be applying for a variance at some point to move forward with this and made it, you know, looking through this with a little bit rosy colored glasses, made it seem like a easy process in terms of just, you know, we kind of inherited this and, you know, we, we were made aware that there is some sort of issue with how the back unit was being used.
At, at settlement, when, when did you do settlement?
Uh, I believe it was the 12th of December, 2024.
And did the prior owner tell you anything more about this issue with the, the rental unit?
Uh, very, not, not very much.
Okay, turn your attention to exhibit seven. What is, this is the rental license that was issued by Havertford Township?
Yes, sir.
Back, and it was effective date March 1st, 2024?
Yes, sir.
And it's set to expire March 1st of 2025 for that rear unit, that detached unit at issue, correct?
Yes, sir.
Explain to the board, you're living in, you and your wife are living in the main house?
Yes, me and my wife and my two young kids are in the main house currently. We just moved in, settled on the 12th of December and moved in just after Christmas on the 27th.
Okay. And turn your attention to the exhibit eight, this is the pre-existing lease for the tenant in that detached mill house?
Yes, sir.
And explain to the board, how much of the living space is it in this mill house? What are we talking about?
Uh, probably around 500 square feet, give or take a, a few square feet here or there.
Essentially, it's a studio?
Yes.
And does it have its own water?
It does.
Does it have its own heating and air conditioning, electricity?
Yes, sir.
And it has its own sewer?
Yes, sir.
So the sewer, there's a sewer line from that detached mill house connecting to yours and your house?
Yes, sir.
And there's one tenant occupying this mill house presently?
Yes, sir.
And what are your intentions moving forward as far as the, the rental of this mill house if the board approves it with any conditions?
Ideally, we would like to keep it as a long-term rental unit, renting to, you know, someone similar to the tenant that we have now, just single occupancy hopefully and get a good tenant in there.
Do you have any intention of applying this mill house unit as an Airbnb?
No, sir.
Is it your intention that the, any tenant occupant would be more long-term, at least minimum year to year, if not longer?
That would be nice.
And directing your attention to exhibit nine, which consists of a series of photographs of the, of the premises, there's, there's, they're numbered, exhibit nine, one through 12. Let's start with exhibit nine, one.
Yep.
What is, first of all, who took these photographs?
Uh, I did.
And approximately, when did you take these photographs?
Uh, this was probably a couple of days ago.
And directing your attention to exhibit nine, one, what is being depicted?
I'm probably standing about 30 yards from the front of the house towards Chestnut Ave and just taking a picture of the, the front of the house with the drive and a little bit of the, the side yard. And then you can kind of see down to the left of the picture, down part of the driveway as well that leads towards the back house and the shed area.
And nine, exhibit nine, two, what is that angle depicting?
Yep, nine, two is a continuation of the drive, you know, some stairs leading into a side entrance of the house. And then again, back, straight back is that shed that is attached to the, the side of the old mill house or the, the rear unit.
And nine, three?
Uh, nine, three is the back of the house, the main house, and then the, just a cement patio with some patio furniture and then off to the left of the picture is AC unit and I believe the, the electrical box on the side of the house and then off to the left is some more asphalt that is between the, the rear unit and the, the shed and the, the mill house.
And exhibit, exhibit, photo number four, what is being depicted?
Yeah, that was just me trying to get a, a picture of the, the side of the house with a little pathway that would head towards the front.
All right, now let's turn to exhibit, photo number five of exhibit nine. What, what are these four pictures representing? Is this the mill house?
This is, this is the mill house, kind of the, the top leftmost photo is just a, a picture of the side of it with a door that would enter where the, the bedroom would be. Off to the far left of that picture again is the, the shed with the double doors. The, the picture top right would be the, another entrance that would enter into what would be kind of a, an entrance way with, you know.
Vestibule?
Vestibule, there you go, that's a good word. And then the kitchen would be off to the, the right of that and then moving down, you're kind of seeing another picture of the entrance way into the bedroom and, you know, a wall of the mill house that if you're going in through there, you'd be entering the kitchen.
All right. And then turn your, your attention to photo number six?
Uh, yeah, again, just the, the door leading into the bedroom of the, the mill house rental unit.
And the shed to the left that you referenced?
Correct.
The, the attached shed?
Yep.
And that, and this building structure was all originally a mill house?
From, from what I've told, yes.
And photo number seven?
Patio area in between the mill house and the, the residence where we are currently living with some patio furniture.
And photo number eight?
That would be the side of the mill house and an AC or a mini split unit off to the low left of that.
And photo number nine?
Photo number nine would be the back of the mill house, a little bit of a patio that has some weeds and shrubberies there right now. And then there's a fence along the, the lower right-hand side that would separate our property from the, the adjacent property and then a, a door that would go into the, the backside of the shed area.
All right, now photos 10, 11, and 12, you didn't take these pictures, correct?
No, sir.
Where did you obtain these photos?
These, these were obtained from the listing at apartments.com of the, the back unit that were, I'm assuming taken by a realtor or the previous owners.
And so what is being depicted in photo number 10, those two, those two?
Those two photos would be the bedroom of the, the rear unit and you can kind of see the entrance way to the bathroom attached to the, the bedroom.
And photo number 11, what is being depicted there?
Photo number 11, the top picture would be off to your right, you're looking into the, the kitchen slash living area of the, the unit and then off to the left of that, you can see a little bit better view of the, the bathroom in there. And then the, the below picture, page 11, you're, you're looking at the, the kitchen living area.
And directing your attention to the exhibit eight, the residential lease agreement, how many tenants are there actually?
Uh, one tenant.
Just one individual?
Yes, sir.
Let's talk about parking. What is the situation with the parking for both you and your wife, the main house and for the one tenant in the mill house?
Uh, yes, in exhibit A, or excuse me, exhibit nine, page one, you can see the, the car parked out in front of the, the main house. That's generally where I park my vehicle. My wife is able to park off to the left of that and then the, the tenant would be able to or does park off to the left of my vehicle and you can also fit a, a vehicle along the side of the house there if you so choose. But there's more parking back towards the street, which if you were to flip around in a 180 degree, you know, fashion, you'd see a, a longer drive where you could fit some more vehicles as well.
Right. And is it your contention that the, this pre-existing mill house that's been converted prior to your ownership constitutes a unique physical circumstance, unique to the subject property?
Uh, yes, sir.
And, and that, that, that feature, that converted mill house prior to your ownership creates an unnecessary hardship to the property?
Yes, sir.
And is it your contention that, you know, the physical circumstances prevent development of the property in strict conformity with the, the provisions of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, sir.
And is it your contention that this pre-existing hardship is, was not created by you, was not self-created by you?
Yes, sir.
And is it your contention that a variance, if authorized, would not substantially impair the neighboring properties or otherwise detract from public welfare in the neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
Is it your contention that the variance is the minimum of Ford relief?
Yes, sir.
And is it your contention that unnecessary hardship would result if the variance were denied?
Yeah, yes, sir.
And is it your contention that the proposed use for the mill house, to legalize it, will not be contrary to public interests?
Yes, sir.
No further questions?
That was certainly a nice, smooth presentation. Clearing the point. Question. Jesse?
So I want to just make it clearer for the record in plain language. So when you went to purchase this home at the end of 2024, the seller did not offer information as to the variance that was before this board that had been submitted?
We, we had some idea that there was talks with the zoning board.
Not the zoning board, the zoning officers?
Uh, zoning officers, sorry. About the back unit, I believe what we were told was that there was a rental license approved and there was some mix-up in communication between the previous owners and what they were allowed to use the back unit for. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Do you know, and if you don't know the answer, you don't have to, you can just say you don't know, but do you have a feeling or do you know for a fact that the seller sold the house because they didn't want to go through? they didn't want to go through this process?
I don't know.
Okay, that's fair. And you did know that the by the by the application and the by the exhibits, you you knew that there was a tenant who had a a lease for one year that would expire in March first of this year?
Uh, yes, sir.
You're aware that the it was occupied and that you were taking over that?
Yes, sir.
That lease, okay. Do you have a if if this was not granted, do you have a plan for what you would use that the what we're calling the mill house for?
Uh, no.
And then I believe you testified pretty clearly, but you just to for the record is clear, you can fit at least four parking, you can fit at least four cars in the parking on the premises as it exists currently?
Yes, sir.
And probably more even?
Uh, more if you put put more on the property, you wouldn't be able to get everybody out at once, you'd have to move some cars around, but.
And I think so, I think we need at least two off street for each unit. So your testimony is that you could fit, you could meet that with four?
Correct.
Off street, okay. I don't I don't have any other questions.
I actually have a question. Rather than go last, I'm going to interject these. If this application was approved, would you agree to a condition that the back may only be rented if the primary home is occupied by the owner?
Uh.
Because this variance would go with the property.
Yes, sir.
So it doesn't only apply to you. I I believe that you're going to be really cautious with who you rent it to. You live there with your wife and your kids. But if you sell it to someone else, the variance goes with the property. And that's why I asked that. And if you want to talk to your attorney about it or think about it, that's fine, but.
That's acceptable condition.
Okay. All right, and you would agree to no short term rentals like the RBO and all that?
Yes, sir.
Like thirty days or less?
Yes, sir.
Would you agree not to expand the mill house, the current rental unit into the garage, the adjacent shed, whatever we're going to call it?
Yes, sir.
Would you agree not to rent any other structures on the property such as the shed?
Yes, sir.
And would you agree that there would be one tenant only? I realize there may be a husband and wife, but maybe two occupants max. You know, we've had the township has had problems in the past with student housing.
Yeah.
Because they could probably fit eight students into that place and it would make you want to move.
Yeah. I would not want a tenant of that nature in the back unit.
Right, would you so you would limit it to two occupants, let's say?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, guys, I know I usually wait and go last, but.
Since we're, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, since we're talking about conditions, I thought of another one would be, would you also accept as a condition that you would not connect the two properties by building an addition on the back of the main house and connecting it and essentially absorbing the mill house? Would you accept that as a condition?
Uh, yes, sir.
Hold on just one second. So, Mr. Man, I just wanted to make sure during your presentation, your counsel was running through the litany of the considerations that we have to get through to give a variance if we wanted to do that. And I I think you were acknowledging, based on questions from your attorney that was that were going through this, that you thought there were unique physical circumstances or conditions that created a hardship. Could you just go through that one more time?
I I guess the way that I understand the the question is, the the way the back unit was taken over by us and the way it is right now, it's just an interesting portion of the property that wouldn't really be useful to us in the way that we were intending to use the property, I guess, or the the way that we kind of foresaw us living there with a tenant in the back, I guess. I'm not sure what we would do with that, so I think that would be the the unique circumstances.
And if I may add to that, it it's not a garage, it's a living quarters.
Yes, sir.
It's not a shed, it's a living quarters now.
Yes, sir. The the mill house.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yes.
And and so what's the hardship here? The physical conditions or circumstances of the property?
Yeah, that that it was a preexisting.
We understand it's a preexisting, nonconforming accessory structure on the property.
No, 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 that but but rather the use was preexisting.
Okay, but that's a legal entitlement.
Yes.
Not a physical condition, is that right?
Yes, but the but the the mill house was previously converted to a living.
I got it, but someone who buys the main house could live in both. They could use both for their own purpose in theory, right? I'm just trying to figure out how are we going to get past the first requirement here that and I think you're conflating legal entitlement with physical condition, yet we have to focus on the physical condition and we have to get over that, right? And in order to get comfortable, and that's why I just wanted to probe into a little bit.
Again, the the it's been the mill house has its own set tourist line, it has its own electric plumbing and.
I got it's physically built that it would allow for living. I do understand that.
And it it's unfortunate that the the left hand of the township in terms of rental inspectors didn't know what the right hand of the zoning department needed to accomplish. And and so there was reasonable reliance.
Understood, but that's a different.
No, I understand.
And I get it.
It's a unique, it's a unique dynamic here. Untangled is not.
So you you are hanging your hat then to some degree on the hardship being that there's a sort of complex legal entitlement.
Not entitlement, but it's like a stop all.
Yeah, okay, but that's different than hardship.
Well, it.
At least under the MPC.
Well, arguably, those types of arguments can can be applied to the the physical nature of this this peculiar mill house.
Okay, it's up to you to make that case and.
Yeah, because another because none of the other houses in the area have a mill house. And so so for this property, this mill house is unique to this property. And that's and it goes back to the physicality of it. It's it's unique, none of the other parcels have it.
And and you are aware that it's economic hardship is not hardship?
And that's why I said that in the very beginning, we're not we're not adopting the initial applicant's position in that regard.
Okay, and then Mr. Point sort of started to go through the timelines. So the first rental license for this back building was granted in March of twenty twenty four?
We're not sure if what the history is, I'm not sure if maybe Mr. Mount would be able to.
We don't know when the first one was, okay.
It's our it's our impression, the way that was represented to my client, that there were prior iterations of licensure.
Okay, that's fair. And the current license, though, was issued in March of twenty twenty four and expires. And and you do realize that, you know, you might not get it renewed, right? Regardless of what happens here, it's a separate process.
Yes.
I just want to make sure because there there seem it seemed like you had some confusion during your diligence and purchasing about the nature of the issue. It was brought to your attention, but maybe it was minimized or diminished in some way in discussions with you. I think, you know, your realtor should have looked into it.
And if I I do have the seller's disclosure statement and he did not disclose it. For the record, as an officer of the court, I'm representing that fact.
Yeah, that's fine. And I appreciate it. And so I just wanted to make sure you understood that almost no matter what happens here, come March of twenty twenty five in six weeks or eight weeks, whatever it is now, this is this you'll you'll be going through a different process that may not have any relationship to what happens here.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have. Ed?
I'm seeing that in your application, it references, and it wasn't your application, it's the application of the prior owner, but it said that township policies by a substitute employee of the township addressing the case. And you don't know who that person might have been at that time?
It was our understanding that there was some employees of the township in the rental department that there was some turnover in that department. So there was no continuity in terms of exchange of information or carryover of information internally by Haverford Township officials pertaining to this property. I think that's what that's what he was alluding to.
Okay, and then but the rental, the sign signed and Mr. Poole is not a temporary substitute employee, he's still an employee of the township, so that's a second person.
I I, yeah, I mean, this is what the seller wrote up and.
Okay.
And again, we're not espousing to his position.
Thank you. And you have no knowledge of whether it looks like the photographs suggest that it looked like it was just remodeled prior to the first this rental agreement. You know when it was remodeled?
I'm not I'm not aware of when it was remodeled.
That was never disclosed to you and?
No.
Whether or not any other building permits were issued to for that work that was done?
Nothing was disclosed to me.
Okay. If such a variance was approved, would you agree to a condition that sort of what the chairman, Mr. Kane, had suggested, but a little different in that the rental unit or the old mill house, which sort of speculation on this part because we have no proof that it was an after old mill house, we just have some hearsay evidence, but that unit would not be expanded or increased in size or increased in bedroom capacity in any way in the future? Five hundred square foot would be limit of the size of that unit?
We agree to that.
Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Jessica?
Just wanted to clarify a couple of things about the rental unit itself. You said in your testimony that it was a studio apartment, but then described it as having one bedroom.
Yeah, somewhere I would say somewhere in between a studio and a one bedroom, just because the the kitchen area is also kind of a a living area, there is no traditional living room, but the the actual bedroom is walled off with a door unlike a, I guess, a traditional studio.
Okay, so it would be a one bedroom and does it have one bathroom or two bathrooms in it?
One bathroom.
One bathroom. And it was just said that the unit has its own sewer line. Is that metered separately from the house?
No, no. It's just connected to the main house's sewer line.
Are are any of the utilities separately billed or?
No, sir.
I don't have any other questions.
And we would agree to, and I I wrote them down as they were being discussed, approximately seven conditions, the applicant would accept those seven conditions if if the application is approved.
You all done, Josh? How about if we take five minute recess? Jeff, we'll off the record. What was the meaning of the Haverford Township zoning hearing board? Questions, where were we? Jesse, you already asked your questions, right? Billy?
I'm good, thank you.
Jessica?
I'm good.
Ed?
Uh, no further questions.
Okay, I don't have any additional questions either.
And then we formally request the introduction and evidence, the applicant's exhibits one through nine.
Okay, one through nine, A one through A nine are admitted. You can have a seat.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any other witnesses?
No, you're no.
Okay.
Chairman.
With that, I'll ask if there's anyone present that received certified now that wishes to testify, please come forward. Please raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, have you got?
I do.
And your full name and address for the record, please.
Steven Fantini, two oh six Walnut Place, Haverford Town, PA. I own the property twenty seven oh three across the street. I also own the property twenty seven oh seven St. Mary's Road that's on the opposite side of the same block for the property in question.
What would you like to tell us, Steven?
That I'm against the two family dwelling, two families on one property consideration. I grew up in this neighborhood. All the lots are deep. I have a twenty seven oh three, I have a two, two, two and a half car garage. I could convert that space then just by running the sewer line out. If you approve this, I'd be able to do that at my property. If you go down the street down towards Biddle Avenue, they're all deep lots, they all have garages or other structures that are setback. The Bennett property, which is two properties over on the same side of the street as the property in question, they have wrapped around garages and that's an oversized lot, a single home that was the farm home for the mill house and all this other stuff of the history. But my father used to rent a garage there. All the like landscapers and different people rent those spaces out. Could you imagine if people start turning into small little one bedroom apartments? It was bad enough down at the bottom of the hill at the corner of Biddle and Chestnut when they turned around and they converted that single property into a apartments for the college kids like you were saying earlier. So while they have the parking for this particular instance under control for their offering, I submit to you, my wife's cousins Jimmy and Patty, they raised two children in a one bedroom, not even a bedroom, it was a basement, single flat. And I mean, they raised the kids till they were teenagers. All these people went in a little basement in a in a row house in Chester where the person lived upstairs. So when you can fit a lot in a small space, just because you have this small space doesn't mean you should do it. In Ardmore, we have a nice community, it's small, it's it's people really want to come live there. And if we start allowing this to occur with this precedent being set, because all it truly is is a separate structure, okay, there are separate structures all along that street besides the houses that occupy the property. I understand there may be some paperwork considerations and owners changing hands and not sharing information like they're supposed to, but that's for the lawyers to settle, that's not for the community to have to suffer through. I don't feel that it's going to help the community by adding more people living in a smaller space. It's going to get smaller and it's going to get run down. And that's really all I can honestly say. Do you have any questions for me?
It's it's been rented.
I that doesn't mean anything, that it got rented without people's permission. It was against the it was against your rules, that's why they're here. The property violated the rules regardless of which owner did it.
And which one of these properties do you live in, Steven?
Do I live in?
Yeah, twenty seven oh three or twenty?
No, I I live in two oh six Walnut Place, I grew up on twenty seven oh seven St. Mary's. My grandmother lived at twenty seven oh three. I grew up in this street, played on it, went to see my grandmother. It's not that I'm against change, that's not it.
I've been there a lot.
If this was an in-law suite, I have no problem with that because it's a single family. It the the in-law is the extension of the family. I don't have a problem with that. But once you give them the variance, you can put all the terms, you know, all the exceptions you want down the road, somebody's going to find a way to sneak around the rule. That's how it got built in the first place.
All right, any questions? Peter, do you have any questions for Steven?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Billy? I just have one question, your very last sentence there, they this was built improperly.
I feel, yeah, I feel that it got through your whatever rules you have in inspections, something got through the cracks, but that's not the neighborhood's fault.
I got it, I got it, I was just trying to try and get.
You know, in other words, like there could be, there could be, it was alluded that the rental department, the the people that handle those inspections weren't aware of of the deed restrictions on the property for multiple families. I mean, on one property, that's what I thought I heard. Now, I don't know how true it is, I don't know anything about all that. Alls I know is what's what I know to be true for being good for the neighborhood. Ardmore property values are stable, steady, rock solid. Go over to Upper Darby, not so much. Go to Darby, not so much. But once you start going down this path, trust me, everybody's going to want to take advantage of an opportunity to make a buck. Okay, and if I if I fix the place up and I sold it to somebody and I didn't tell them that I I didn't do all follow all the rules, does that make the neighborhood have to suffer with, oh, well, I was promised a rental property when I purchased it? It's not fair to the community. That's 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 the only simplest argument I could make about that particular matter. You know, and I I five hundred square feet, I could turn it into a game room, a man cave, I could do a lot of different things with five hundred square feet. I was only allowed to build out. I was only allowed to build out five feet off of my kitchen for sixty square feet, and I stood before you several years ago, and by the way, thank you for approving it, because that little fifty, that little sixty square feet turned into where I could walk around my kitchen table, but we were taking up driveway, converting driveway, not taking away grass and all that stuff, we weren't really changing anything in the neighborhood. This is going to change things in the neighborhood, because once it's given to one, it's available to all, and you can't put it back.
Not all would have these circumstances, but I don't know how the board's going to...
I understand.
There's a lot of peculiar circumstances here.
Yeah, well, there's leopards, there's, there's tigers, there's pumas, there's all kinds of things that have different spots and colors.
If it's approved, it will not be a precedent, but...
Well, like I said, I don't have a problem with an in-law suite, but a, two families on one property, you're not getting twice the tax, okay, and after you approve it, nobody's going to be there being the guard keeper, you know, the gatekeeper, making sure that the rules are followed, it's got to be done in a way that's fair for everybody, and I don't think it's fair.
All right, Jess?
I don't have any questions other than to say, I live two blocks away from the subject property, so I care very deeply for this neighborhood, and I always have my eye out, and I'm always keeping an eye on making sure people are doing as, as much as I can see from, from the public way. So I appreciate your sentiments that you've, you know, spoken tonight and, and, you know, just neighbor to neighbor, I, you know, I care deeply about this neighborhood as well, so...
You're here, that, that, I understand, everybody here, I know you care about the neighborhood, I recognize when I'm talking to you about that, I'm just saying that I heard a lot of, a lot of issues, a lot of things discussed, I felt a lot of inclinations in different areas, but, but in my opinion, it doesn't matter if something got through the cracks, it's going forward, what's the right thing to do for the community. And I don't think it's right if you turn around and you give somebody an exception just because somebody, there was a mistake somewhere along the line, a minutia of mistakes, and, well, that denies the rest of the neighborhood the same luxury, because I'd love to live in my house and get rent out of my garage, or a structure on my property, you know, and, it never existed before. I grew up here, I know it didn't exist, so if something got through administratively, you know, we have to go through that experience and tough it out, but we got to hold the community in a consistent fashion, we have to be fair to the community, we all make mistakes. When he bought the property, he did say he heard there might be some issues. When I'm spending six hundred thousand or seven hundred thousand dollars on the property, I'm going to make some phone calls, I'm not going to walk into it like a little kid, we're not buying a newspaper, we're buying a property. It's a responsibility of everybody involved, even the realtor, even the people that sold him the property, if he was misled, that guy can help him get his, get, get whole, it's not our job to swallow it, pass it through, and we got to make him whole. I care about him, I welcome the new neighbor, I think it's great that he's here, but the issue still stands, two wrongs don't make a right.
All right, Ed, any questions?
No questions.
Jessica?
No questions.
Okay, thank you, Steven.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that received certified mail?
Do I need to ask for special standing, or do I have it?
Are you asking for party status?
Yes.
Okay, and where do you reside?
I reside at 206 Walnut Place.
Okay, and that's, where is that located near the front?
By the Grange. I don't live on the street, I don't live on the block.
You own properties?
Yes, I own properties, on the block as well as across the street.
Okay, and I think you said 2703 is directly across the street?
Directly across the street, if you Googled it, if I drove out of my drive, I would hit the house next to his drive.
Directly across the street is good.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it's sufficient for party status.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Have a great night, guys.
So, is there anyone else that received certified mail, anyone that received regular mail, any other residents by Haverford Township? Anything you'd like to add, Peter, before I close the record?
Mr. Chairman.
All right, with that, we'll close the record on this case, and the decision will be rendered at our next regularly scheduled meeting on February 6th.
Thank you all, good evening.
You're welcome, have a good night.
Thank you.
It was... It's an approval, sir. Hathaway Lane, Ardmore, PA, DC Polio number 22060094100, to seek relief from section 182-208-C2G to allow a 23-foot 6-inch rear yard setback where 25-foot is required, and relief from section 182-208-C2F1 to allow a side yard setback of 6 feet 0 inches where 12 feet 0 inches is required. The applicant seek relief from the determination of the zoning officer, and in the alternative, a special exception or variance as determined by the zoning board to allow the setbacks as requested by the owner. Property is owned R6 and located in the sixth ward. Jonathan, you want to come up?
I want to leave.
Okay, so you want to enter your appearance first?
Good evening, I'm Ari Christakis, on behalf of the applicant.
Eric, how do you spell your surname?
C-H-R-I-S-T-A-K-I-S. And for purposes of procedure here, this is among other requests, specifically a special exception and also a variance request, this is an appeal from the zoning officer's determination, therefore to properly move forward, Jonathan will have to present the basis for his decision, what his decision is, and then at that point, we'll turn the rest of it over to the applicant to proceed with its case.
What's your first name again?
Ari, A-R, Ari Stedes.
Oh, Ari, okay, I think, got it. Counselor?
Counselor, yes, I'm with Buckley Bryan in Westchester.
All right, Jonathan, I need to swear you in, please raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And your full name and the capacity with which you appear this evening?
Jonathan Glenn Mount, and I'm here as the zoning officer of Haverford Township.
What would you like to tell us, Jonathan?
I'm going to give you relevant sections. Thank you. Zoning ordinance reference?
We need to mark these, T1.
Jonathan, just real quick.
Yep.
You have several documents you're going to want to present.
It's basically all one document, it's just, it's verbatim sections of the zoning ordinance, and the last page just simply has a reasoning for my, my decision, if you'd like to make those two different documents, you can do that.
Yeah, so we do T1 for the verbatim portion of section 182-106 of zoning code, in addition to 182-208...
802.
802.
103.
And 103.
And this is just the first, how many of these pages, it's the first, the first, the first four pages?
Four pages, and then the fifth page, as a separate page, we'll make that T2, and that is a brief reasoning of Mr. Mount's decision.
So just, just factually, from the zoning ord... Sorry.
I just want to make sure, yeah, do you have a copy? I do have a copy of T1.
Yeah, just, just so that you understand, the first section of my presentation is basically verbatim from the zoning ordinance, just taking you through the process that I use to make the determination, so you can understand where we're coming from. From section 182-106, which is definitions, a single-family detached dwelling is what the applicant currently has and represents that they have, and it is located in accordance with 182-208 in the R6 medium-density residential district, and the usage by right does allow the single-family semi-detached dwelling, and it, basically then I take you into the area and bulk regulations, which indicates that the, for this particular use in that district, the side, required side yard setback is 12 feet. So there are various side yard setbacks for different kinds of dwellings in the district, but in this particular case, under F, single-family semi-detached dwelling is a 12-foot minimum setback. Under 182-802, regulations concerning non-conforming uses of buildings, I've included the entire section there, but under subsections B, subsection C, any extension authorized in accordance with this section shall conform to the yard, building coverage, and height requirements of the district in which the use is, such use is located, and to any buffer screening, off-street parking, or other provision of this chapter, chapter applicable in such district. Under 182-103, regulations for non-conforming lots, and this, I'll read verbatim so that you get the gist of this, "The use of any non-conforming lots of record shall be controlled by the terms of the zoning hearing board, provided that the yard dimensions and other requirements of any lot not involving area or width or both shall conform to the regulations for the district in which such lot is located, unless otherwise specifically authorized as a special exception by the zoning hearing board, and that in any case, a building shall comply with the yard and other requirements of the district to the maximum extent practicable." So the question came up, is this a special exception or a variance? So first thing I had to look at was the definition, "Non-conforming lots of record," are those lots lots, and this is from exhibit 2, "Non-conforming lots of record are those lots lawfully in existence and meeting the applicable lot size and dimension requirements in effect at the time the lot was approved, but which do not conform to subsequently applicable or enacted requirements." So the criteria for regulation, being regulated as a non-conforming lot of record was, I asked myself the following four questions, was this lot lawfully in existence, did it meet the applicable lot size and dimension requirements at the time it was approved, did a change in zoning create the non-conformity, are any or all of these issues provided sufficient support by the applicant at the time of the application for the permit or zoning hearing board application for relief? The property file does not indicate that this parcel has been placed on any list of legal non-conforming properties, nor does it indicate that individually the parcel has any legal non-conforming aspects. The only alternative means of relief then for, under the Pennsylvania Municipality's planning code, is a variance for the side yard setback issue. So in an abundance of caution, because the applicant had come in with a special exception application, so as not to have a continuance occur, I suggested to them that they provide two alternative forms of relief, one would be, come in prepared for a variance application in case the board decided it was actually a variance and not a special exception, and in that, and then in the alternative, if they didn't like my decision in that regard, they could appeal my decision that this was actually a variance and not a special exception application. So I don't have a particular interest in seeing it go one way or the other, but in an abundance of caution, I suggested that they come in with the application in either direction and leave it to the applicant to make their case at this hearing that in fact they believe it's a special exception rather than a variance. I don't find the wording very clear in our ordinance, but my determination was that it's a variance application, not a special exception.
Can I ask a question, Jonathan?
Mm-hmm.
The file for the house give any indication of when the house was built in relationship to the current zoning code with the side yard setbacks?
Our, our file doesn't show when the house was built, I don't know when or if this was created by a change in zoning, and I also don't know that if the portion of the dwelling that comes closest to the side yard was an addition or was original to the dwelling.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ed?
No question.
Bill?
No, for Jonathan, thank you.
Jesse?
Mr. Chairman, ma'am?
Yes.
Mr. Mount, what about the plan submission suggested to you that a variance was necessary for the side yard setback?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm...
What about the applicant's application view led you to believe that a variance would be necessary for the side yard setback?
Because the zoning ordinance requires a 12-foot side yard, and the applicant's looking for something that's less than 12 feet.
Was the applicant proposing any additions to the structure on the side yard?
Into the side yard, yes. The site plan indicates that there is an addition being placed toward that side yard that does not comply with the 12-foot setback.
So this, just to be clear, side yard would be the side that is perpendicular to the street, is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, so I believe there's an applica, or excuse me, an exhibits package in front of you?
Mm-hmm.
Just for the board's housekeeping purposes, can I mark these if you, if you wouldn't mind for just a moment?
Sure.
In that packet, A1 is a deed to the applicant's, A2 is the application to this zoning hearing board, A3 is the CV for the applicant's design professional, A4 is the satellite image of the surrounding neighborhood, A5 is the plan set for the work, A6 is the tax card for 721 Hathaway Lane. So, Mr. Mount, referring you to what's been marked as A5, that first page of A5, which is sheet SP, what, is it, you're understanding this is identical to the plan that was submitted to you originally?
Mm-hmm.
What, what addition can you point to that's going on the side of the house that would infringe on the side yard setback?
They're, they're indicating, according to the plan, the, in particular on 1SP, where it says proposed, the right-hand site plan there, that there's an addition going on the rear of the dwelling that comes within, I believe it says nine feet one of the side yard setback.
Isn't the existing side of the house at nine foot one?
On, well, if I'm facing the house from Hathaway Lane, to be clear, this is on the right side of the rear of the house, the addition is indicated to come within nine feet one of the right-hand side yard setback.
Okay, I understand. Mr. Mount, what is the building area or the lot area for this parcel?
What is the building area?
I'm sorry, what is the lot area?
The lot width?
No, the lot area.
The lot area? The lot area required is 3,000 square feet, and the existing is 2,500.
And what is the width of the lot?
The width of lot is required to be 25, and he's indicating 25.
What's the minimum lot width at the building line in the R6 district?
38 feet.
Is any portion of this lot wider than 38 feet?
No.
Referring you to site plan for the existing, which is on the left side, the top... Referring you to site plan for the existing, which is on the left side, the top of SP?
Yep.
What's the present condition of the rear yard setback?
I'm sorry again.
What's the present condition of the rear yard setback?
The present condition of the rear yard setback is, looks like, according to you, is 23 feet six inches.
And what is the side yard setback, present condition?
Side yard, the side yard, the current distance between the house and the, and the property line?
Yes.
Six feet.
No further, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Would you like to move exhibits T1 and T2 into the record?
Yes.
Any objections?
One question, what is exhibit T2? I just have T1.
T2 is just the, what do you read?
This, this last page?
Yeah.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, we broke it up into the being separated.
Thank you, yes.
Any objection?
All right, there it is. You have a witness, Ari?
I do. Actually. First up, I'm going to have the homeowner, this Leanne Rus, excuse me, Leanne Gunther, got it right.
Evening.
I would ask that she be sworn.
I will. Writing your name down. Please raise your right hand, Leanne. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Sure.
And your full name and address for the record, please.
Leanne Gunther at 721 Hathaway Lane, Ardmore, PA, 19003.
Go ahead, Ari.
Thank you. Ms. Gunther, how long have you lived at 721 Hathaway Lane?
We bought the house in 2011, so about 13 years.
And referring you to what's been marked as exhibit A1 in the packet in front of you, is that the deed wherein you acquired ownership in that property?
Yes.
Can you briefly describe the property and its current use?
It's a two-story twin attached, and my husband and I live there with our three kids.
And what are you seeking to do with your home?
We're seeking to take the, the piece that's off the back as a mudroom and a small powder room and expand that so that we can have a bathroom on the lower, lower floor of the house that can service as a full bath, because the bath upstairs isn't large enough currently. So we're looking to expand the two-floor, two-floor addition.
So when you say two-floor addition, there's a one-story structure that projects from the house now, is that right?
Yes.
And the idea would be to remove that and replace it with a two-story structure, is that right?
Yes, it's in, it needs repair, yeah.
And originally, you had hired a contractor to file building for you, correct?
Correct, in October.
Those were the permits that Mr. Mount had denied and the reason we're here tonight?
Yes.
And did you hire Mr. Christakis to prepare designs for you?
Yes.
Were you aware that the lot is non-conforming?
No, because every house on that street on Hathaway has the same protrusion, and some of them even go further back.
Well, I meant actually the size of the lot, lot is too small. Did you know that when you purchased the property?
Oh, no.
Okay. If you were to add a bathroom to your house, that's not going to change the size of the lot, is that right?
No, doesn't change anything.
Referring you to what's been marked as exhibit A5, and turning to this, make sure I get you the right page, the third page in that sheet, that's a page in kind of 100.
Okay.
Do you see that? Is that the plan for your renovations to the house?
Yes.
And the restrooms that you're talking about are at the top of the page, right?
Yes.
Okay. They're not very big, are they?
No, no. The, the existing bathroom is very small, small enough that my husband has to sit sideways on the toilet because his legs are long. You may have noticed he was here earlier, he's 6'2", he's not like huge, right? But it's, it's a tight bathroom as it is, as it sits right now.
So as part of this renovation, are you planning on making any other changes to the property?
Yeah, we would like to add laundry facilities between where the existing bathroom is on the second floor. We'll add our laundry from the basement because currently it's down two flights of steps. We'll put that on the floor that'll service then the three bedrooms, including the master.
Okay, are you doing anything on the exterior of the home?
The hardscaping?
Is there any variance or relief required for that hardscaping?
No.
So why do you think that you need that depth to the back? Why is that?
Well, because as I mentioned earlier, I have three small kids and I need a bathtub on the second floor. And on the second floor, if we were to adjust the size, I wouldn't be able to put a standard bathtub on the second floor. So we use that for the kids and for helping with the laundry, because we're not going to put a big tub in there. We already have a tub, so if we need to wash something by hand, it's already there. But I can't have that same standard-sized tub if we are to adjust the size of the addition.
You're aware that you're here tonight, at least requesting special exception relief, is that fair?
Yes.
And you heard the discussion here about whether it's a variance or
Yeah.
a, a special exception, is that right? Referring you to what's been marked as exhibit A2, is that the application that was filed on your behalf in response to the zoning officer's determination?
Yes.
I want to walk through just a handful of questions that relate to your prior use of the property. You haven't at any time subdivided this parcel?
No.
Did you build the house? The house was there when you, when you bought the lot, right?
Yeah, we haven't done anything to the house since buying it.
You haven't done any renovations at all since you bought it?
No, none.
Are, are you proposing to use this property for anything other than your personal residence?
No.
Are you proposing any, building anything that would bring, that would reduce the amount of the present side yard setback? In other words, than the six-foot that Mr. Mount talked about before?
I'm sorry, what was the first part?
Are you planning any additions onto the side of the house? So the only addition is at the rear of the house?
Yes.
And you're going to maintain the setback that exists now?
Correct, yes.
If you know, how much does your existing structure encroach into the rear yard setback? You don't know? Okay, we'll ask the contractor.
Okay.
Have you received any feedback from your neighbors regarding the project?
Yes, I've spoken with all the neighbors. Because of the way that the street is aligned and because of the way the parcel is divided up, I have quite a few neighbors around me. So I've spoken with all of them and no one has any issues. I did have one request that the window in the proposed bathroom be removed, which I think is already in the design, so we were happy to remove that window because it would overlook their property. And that was the only comment, and other than that, everyone is in support of this.
Is there anything else you'd like the board to know about this project?
Well, you know, I could have moved out of the township, I could have moved out of Ardmore, but I really didn't want to because my kids are so rooted in the school district here. They go to Chestnut Wall, we walk to the school, we love the school, the playground's right there, it's so ideal for raising a family. I could have moved, but I don't want to, and I don't want to uproot them. And my son is the only boy on our block, and there are 10 girls. So he doesn't want to leave. He likes scores, that's what he says. Yeah, they, they're just really a part of our community and, you know, they've got friends all up and down the street. I'm not making a huge bathroom, I'm trying to make it livable so that we can continue to stay here. And we haven't done anything to the house since 2011 because, you know, we wanted to build our family and see what, what happened. But we bought our house here because it was near Chestnut Wall, because of the schools. So we really don't want to have to relocate so that we can sit on the toilet without turning our knees or, so that we can have the appropriate space to put a tub in.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Jesse, Bill?
I think you touched on this a little bit, but the other houses on Hathaway Lane, they have a similar bump out in the back, that, or that one-story addition, correct?
Correct.
Would you say that all of the, all of the twins on Hathaway Lane that look like your house have that bump out in the back? And do they also have the side bump out?
The houses are exactly identical.
Okay.
That model, they just put out like five times over.
And is there a twin next to you on the adjacent property?
Uh, that, that is, that belongs to the house behind us to that, that corner edge.
Okay, so next to your house is just green backyard space?
Yeah, they recently put up a fence.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, I would just say, don't get rid of your bathroom window if you want it, just frost it.
I'm sorry?
Don't get rid of your bathroom window if you want it, just frost it, because you'll probably regret not having a window.
Well, we do have one.
Oh, you do have one, okay.
Yeah, this was just an extra one that was just really nice because then you can look over the, the rest of the neighborhood, but.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't have any other questions.
Ed?
So the, the second addition, looking at your exhibit A5, it's not clear to me, but it, just like you're going to build nine-foot-one-by-six-foot addition, greater than was existing prior. In other words, you're building another rectangle-shaped addition to the existing addition.
Yes, yeah, we're going to just finish it off at that line.
But that one will not go, the new additions will not go any further back into the backyard than exists with that unit?
No, they will not go further back.
And you're going to have a two-story, but they're not going to, you're not going to get any closer than your house corner to the side yard setback?
That's correct.
Other than you're going to extend it, we're up here, you know, that six feet.
Yes, that's correct.
The deck, the patio is going to be a patio. You're adding to that? You're adding to your patio?
Uh, it's just going to be relocated because of, I assume when they start the construction, things will have to be, I don't know even what the word is. Is this a better question for, for Kristoff?
And did you look at the issue of impervious surface?
Yeah, I've left that in the hands of better-suited folks to answer those questions.
It, it has a chart on here, so I'm assuming that somebody looked at it.
Oh, yes, yes, I did, but I, I honestly don't know all the terms, so I don't feel comfortable answering.
And I think it's on A5?
Yeah, I, I seen it, but I haven't done any calc, it doesn't show the green area, so it's really hard to tell
Oh, okay.
what's impervious and what's not impervious.
Well, the existing.
The only area that's labeled pervious is the side yard and the front yard. And the backyard doesn't have it labeled pervious, so that will not be part of our decision, the impervious. So if you go over that, that may require another variance
Okay.
at some time.
Understood.
Okay, I have nothing.
Jesse?
I'm referring to A4, which is the Google Earth aerial photo. Is it, would it be fair to say that your rear yard is not as deep due to the unique geometry of the lots and the angled streets coming together?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
So Humphreys is the street, you, you made testimony that your neighbor on one side is actually the rear yard of, of the next street over?
Yes.
Which is Humphreys?
It would be Oakview.
Oakview, okay.
So Hathaway Lane is on the far side. Our house is the one that's indicated with the, the red
Red dot.
Dot, right? And so if you go back, you'll notice the way that the parcels are subdivided there, it's houses that are on Humphreys and also houses that are on Oakview because of the nature of how the streets were divided.
Do your rear, does it clip the kind of back corner of your lot then? It's not rectangular then?
Um, I believe the lot is rectangular.
So the subject property is rectangular, the adjoining property to the southwest is not, is highly irregular
Yeah.
and has basically what looks like a, a flag or tongue that sticks back
Okay.
towards Hathaway. And that's the open space that's adjacent to the subject property.
Then putting it a different way, is, is your lot less deep than other, than the average house on Hathaway?
I don't think so.
No?
It doesn't, I don't think so, because all of the houses, like if you look, if you're standing in, on those back steps and you look down, you can see everybody's lot is the, the same.
Okay.
Yeah, I think he's talking about the rear property line. From this aerial view, it doesn't look exactly straight, it looks like the lots sort of shrink as they come down the street toward yours.
So they do not?
If it's in odd shape.
By way of an offer, I checked this earlier today with the, with the Delaware campaign GIS system, all of the lots going north from the subject property are the same depth. All of them are non-conforming as to lot size, except for one. There is a one lot that is presently, there's nothing on it, it's enclosed with a fence. That lot happens to conform to the minimum lot area. All of the other properties on this street are, are, are the same depth, 100 feet deep.
Okay. And as stated before, they're smaller than is currently required by code, so that is one unique aspect.
Correct.
Okay, I don't, I don't have any other questions, I, I think you presented the case very clearly, so I don't have any other questions.
Bill?
I don't have any questions for Ms. Gunther, I may have some questions for the architect, but I'll go for either.
All right, thank you.
With that, I would call Kristos Christakis.
You go by Chris or Kristoff?
Either.
What's your preference?
I have a, I have a son named Christopher, so I used to be Chris, but now everybody calls me Kristof, Kristos, because my son is Chris. Now, Chris is fine.
Okay. Please raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Are you related to this guy here?
He's my older son.
For the record, Mr. Christakis, does that have any bearing on your testimony this evening?
Not, not at all, not at all.
Mr. Christakis, you were hired by Mr. and Mrs. Gunther to design the addition that is the subject of tonight's hearing, is that right?
That's correct.
All right, and referring you to what's been marked as exhibit A3 in the packet, is that your current curriculum vitae?
Yes.
Members of the board, I get to do this only once in a lifetime. I'm going to
Ask him anything you want, you have all the way you want, when he was 16 and he wanted a car.
I intend to offer this witness as an expert in three separate fields, which I understand is weird, and I, I want you to understand that I wouldn't do it except for that he's my dad and his CV actually supports it. I, I'm offering him in the, in the fields of engineering, architecture, and construction. You can see from his resume, he has dual master's degrees in architecture and engineering, he's been in the construction industry for more than 40 years, he's been admitted to, to testify as an expert in numerous proceedings, but never actually before the zoning hearing board of Haverford Township. So with that, I would offer him on that basis. I am prepared to conduct a bardeer if you'd like, but in the interest of time, I'll offer that.
I am.
That's unusual for us, the areas.
It, it is. No, and neither do I, I'm actually also very familiar with the witness and know his qualifications, and I am satisfied with the attorney's representation in addition to the CV that I've seen, unless the board has any other questions or concerns.
Absolutely not.
Thank you. Mr. Christakis, as part of your work as the designer in this project, have you had the opportunity to visit the property?
I have visited, yes.
And have you familiarized yourself with the surrounding area?
Yes, one interjection, I have done another property design about two years ago, the same street.
Okay. And exhibit A4, that was referred to a few minutes ago, that's a fair and accurate depiction of the neighborhood?
Correct.
What work have you done in preparing for this project specifically?
After I was contacted by the owner, we met at the house, I walked through the house to get a general feeling, feeling of the overall condition of the house, and then we sat down with the owners, both husband and wife, and we discussed their needs and goals, what they were looking for, program requirements, design criteria, what, what are your needs? And one of the first things they said is, you know, we need a, we need a laundry upstairs, because, you know, every time we go up and down, it's, it's very risky and very dangerous. So because of that, the only place to put the laundry is in the existing existing location of the, uh, uh, of the existing current bathroom, which is a full bathroom on the second floor. That required bumping out to the, to the, on top of the lower part that we discussed earlier, uh, to put the, the new bathroom up there. The first floor bathroom was, uh, a very small powder room, not very good to, and they also wanted to convert that into a full, full bathroom, and the, the designs that we came up with, uh, gave them that, that opportunity.
Okay. Um, and just to authenticate, you prepared exhibit A5, is that right?
Uh, A5. Well, yes, I prepared that, part of that, and, and some of the work was done by my associates, my assistants, under my direct supervision.
Okay. Um, using exhibit A5, can you just walk the board through exactly what the changes to the house would be?
Yes, uh, there, there are two, uh, site plans there, plot plans that were surveyed by, uh, by us, and, uh, using the, uh, the deeds for meets and bounds, uh, we plotted this on, in AutoCAD, but looking on the left is the, the existing site plan, uh, which show the, the two-story semi-detached unit, uh, in the middle, then there's a front porch. Uh, the question was asked earlier about pervious and impervious, and I think you can see on this plan which parts of the plan are pervious and which ones are impervious. They're calling the sidewalk and anything that, you know, perhaps I, you know, we could have done a better job by making it green for the, for the pervious area, but it's, it's not. Uh, so on the, the back of the house is, there are some steps that go up to a landing, and then there's an existing one-story, it's called shed. Uh, it's a lean-to, you know, with a sloping roof, and that's where the, the current, uh, uh, powder room as well as the mudroom, as you go in a very tiny space, you go in and you turn left and you go right into kitchen of the, of the space.
Mr. Christakis, referring you to exhibit A5, it's sheet A300, which is the second sheet. Is that a picture of the present condition in the top right of that sheet?
A300?
It's the second sheet of exhibit A5.
D1. Yes. Did you repeat the question again?
Those are pictures of the subject property.
Yes, that's the, the rear view of the, of the property.
And this is the, this is the element that's labeled as a shed or sometimes called a mudroom?
Yes.
On the plan? Okay. Thank you. Please proceed.
So on, on the site plan, we, we see that the, the existing, uh, uh, building that is there measures six foot deep towards the back, and it's six foot 10 wide. That's where the, the powder room and the mudroom is. And then, uh, the area that we're adding is another six foot to the back, maintaining the, the setback in the back, and a, a nine foot one to bring us to the corner of the building, uh, of the existing building. That's the new addition. Uh, so we're going to remove those steps shown on the left and all the concrete sidewalks there. Now, the, the existing patio that shows with the squares there, the checkered squares, is going to get slightly larger because of the circulation, because the new exit now is going to go towards the back, and, and so the, the, uh, the client requested for, uh, slightly larger, uh, patio. By the way, the impervious coverage is way, way within the limits, even with the, the new addition of the, of the sidewalks. I mean, we, we can go up to 75% and, uh, with the new addition, we're down to, we're up to 71%. So, yes, with the, with the pictures on A300, uh, you can see the, uh, both the, the existing conditions with the photographs and the, uh, proposed conditions with the elevations from the side elevation to the rear elevation, you can see that those, the bathroom upstairs, by the way, has the two windows that you were asking before on, in the back, but there was another window on the side that would face the neighbor, which was objected, and then we removed that window.
All right. Um, is this proposed, let's walk through the non-conformities on the site. Um, did you evaluate the lot area of the site?
I did. As I said, I had done a, 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 a project similar to that a couple of years earlier, but I had to refresh myself for the, for this particular lot and found out that there were some non-conformities, existing non-conformities.
Okay, so what is the lot area of the subject property?
The, the area of this, of the property is 2,500 square feet.
And what is the minimum lot size required for a single-family semi-detached home in the R6 district?
3,000 square feet.
So the lot is smaller than is required by the zoning ordinance?
That is correct.
How did you determine the area of the lot size?
Well, we, we use the deed for meets and bounds and, and sizes and directional, directionality, and then we, we use AutoCAD to plot the lot so that we got a closure complete, and then, you know, with AutoCAD, uh, we calculated areas, but in this case is a pure rectangle, so it's 25 by 100, so we didn't even need to do that, but it's, it's a 2,500 square feet.
So you used the legal description from the deed?
Correct.
Okay. You heard the testimony earlier about the other properties along Hathaway Lane. Uh, is this property, uh, are there properties in the R6 district that you're aware of that conform with ordinance?
Those two requirements for the property lot size, as well as the 38-foot at the line of the building, of the, of the building, is not, are not met in just about every, every property on, along that line. It's just, I have a theory as to where that 38-foot came from, but that's-
Come back to the theory.
Something else.
Come back to the theories. Um, so, uh, also, let's move on to the width. Is the lot too narrow pursuant to the zoning ordinance?
Well, the lot is, is narrower than the, uh, uh, at the 38-foot, but the 25-foot it comprises.
Okay, so let's back up. Uh, what does the ordinance require the width of the lot be at the building line?
38 feet.
And what is the width of the lot?
25 feet.
Okay, so the lot is too narrow, right?
At that point, yes.
Okay.
It's not too narrow in the front. It's 25 feet, which is, but at, at, at that point is too narrow.
Uh... Does the proposed addition increase any of the existing non-conformities on the lot?
No.
All right, I just want to run through a couple of professional opinion questions. Uh, is the property suitable for, in your professional opinion, is the property suitable for its use as a residence?
Yes.
Okay. In your opinion, is there anything about the proposed addition that's not suitable for the property?
No. For the residence.
Are the proposed hardscaping improvements compliant with, I, I'm sorry, you answered that question already?
Yes.
Your surface is okay. Is stormwater management required for this project?
There, there's no, no requirement for stormwater management.
Okay. Uh, what would the exterior treatment of the new addition be?
Basically repeating the, the materials that are used for the property. We're going to use siding, and the existing roof will be matching existing conditions.
Is, is there anything unusual about the addition from an architectural perspective?
I don't think so.
Okay. Um, in your opinion, will the proposed addition negatively affect neighboring properties?
I don't think so.
Uh, does it have any adverse impacts on the interests of the township or its facilities?
I don't think so.
All right, let's talk about lawfully non-conforming. Uh, when did the Gunthers buy their property?
Uh, according to the deed, it was purchased in 2011.
And did you conduct an investigation of the structure, uh, that would indicate the age of the lot?
Yes, wh- wh- when I did the previous property and this one here, I, I had concluded that those properties, based on my previous experience of many projects, uh, in, in, around the area, uh, was done in, in the 30s and 40s. As it turns out, reading the, uh, uh, what's the exhibit, the last page there?
Are you referring to exhibit A6, which is the tax card?
The tax card, yeah. That states that the property was built in, uh, 1930.
Okay.
And by the way, when, when I inspected the, the building, I went to the basement and under the crawl space, and I looked at the structure. I, you know, I was a structural engineer before I studied architecture, so I, I wanted to see the condition of destruction also when, you know, was it, was it the same vintage under the crawl space and, and over? I wanted to see if the shed was added, but it, it, it looks and it is, uh, part of the original house. It was built before.
Mr. Christakis, did you also evaluate the predecessor deeds for the property?
Uh, yes, we did.
And was the legal description in those deeds identical to the present legal description?
That is correct.
Okay.
But all the, the previous deeds did, did not go all the way to the, to the beginning of the 1930. I think the, the first deed recorded was 1974.
Right. Hold on one second. I don't think that's right. What, what year was the township zoning ordinance enacted?
I think it was 1974.
Okay, but the deeds that you reviewed, did they not go back before 1974?
I may be mistaken, but, uh, that's, that's my recollection.
All right, I'm going to mark another exhibit, if you don't mind. Am I up to A7? Crush your father's recollection. Mr. Christakis, showing you it's been marked as exhibit A7. Recognize that document? What is that document?
It's the deed, uh, that, uh, was done between Richard Denver, previous owners, and it's dated 1978.
Very good. Can you read the legal description to me from that?
It would be...
The section entitled "Being the Same."
Yes. Need new glasses. This is a very small can of reading. Could you help me out here?
Sure.
Would you please?
Okay.
Being the same premises which Richard Charles Denver, uh, single man by indenture bearing date the 14th day of December of 1950, I, I missed that, and recorded at media in the office of the record date in, in the county of Delaware, the 8th date of January 1951.
All right.
So it's an older one. I missed that.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, the township zoning ordinance was enacted in 1974, you testified, right?
Correct.
And, uh, lot was established at least in 1950. It could have been before, correct?
Well, yeah, it, it, it was before that, but at least 1951.
Okay. And based on your investigation of the home and your inspection of its condition, it's your opinion that the home and the mudroom were constructed prior to 1974?
Yes.
Based on your review of the structure and the relevant records, is your opinion that the structure in its present configuration was erected as it exists today prior to the imposition of the 3,000 square foot minimum lot area required by the zoning ordinance?
It has to be because 3,000 is not, none of the other properties comply with 3,000.
How does the township zoning ordinance treat non-conforming lots? Does it have a section that refers to what you should do if you want to increase or develop a non-conforming lot?
I, I believe it, it gives you the option to, uh, to get a special exception, and that was the, uh, I'm looking for the section number for the special exception. I, I don't have it here.
That's all right. We have it in.
Yeah.
It's fine. Uh, can you explain why the 18-inch encroachment into the rear yard is the ma-, is the minimum extent practicable using the language in the zoning ordinance?
Well, the, the 18 encroachment would set us back to, to comply with the setback in the back if we came back. So we need that 18 inches in there because that gives us a six-foot bathroom. The tubs are five foot deep. We can't turn the tub the other way architecturally because there's no way to walk through it, uh, you know, with all the other amenities of the bathroom. So, yeah, we could turn this into a powder room four foot wide because that's what it would be if we lose that 18 inches, but it's, uh, that's what we're here for, is to, is to allow us to set everything back to the original location of what that lean-to is right now.
All right. In your opinion, does the proposed work expand any non-conformity on the property?
No.
Uh, in your opinion, does this project comply with the standards for a special exception under the township zoning ordinance?
I believe so, but this, people here are going to decide.
Uh, is it your opinion that if the board considers the various criteria, does this project meet those requirements as well?
Uh, I think so, yes.
Um, is the size of the lot a physical feature of the lot? Fair to say?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, i- is it, the applicants didn't subdivide their lot, correct?
No.
Is there any reason why this proposal would be adverse to the public health, safety, and welfare?
None that I see of.
Uh, is there anything else you'd like to add to your testimony this evening?
Can I say my theory about the 38 feet? Anybody wants to know?
Yeah, go for it.
You want to hear it? If you look at the, uh, R6, uh, district, there's a single family and a, uh, I mean, not a single family, a, a, a single family detached and a single family attached, and that's what we are here, the attached. But in the detached section, that's where it started from, because in that, for that zoning, uh, requirements, you need a 4,000 square foot lot. To get a 4,000 square foot lot, 100-foot depth, you need a 38 or more width. So I think that was transposed into the, the, uh, the, the attached, single family, and they left that 38 because none of them have, can meet that requirement. It has to be a pie-shaped property to go 25 in front and then widen to 38. The, no such thing exists there. So I think it was somebody dropped the ball in leaving that 38 because everything else is fine, but, you know?
It's a matter of planning.
And, and, uh, and, and the overall size of the, of the properties of 3,000, uh, as I said, the, the other property was 2,900, a little bit more than this, but it's still under 3,000. So it is what it is, and I don't know if the township wants to do anything to change, because that 38 is, is not, nobody can meet that criteria.
Just one final question. Have all of the opinions you've expressed here tonight been rendered to a reasonable degree of certainty in the professional fields in which they were rendered?
Yes, they have.
Thank you, I have no further questions for this witness.
Jessica?
I have no questions.
Bill?
I only had one question. I understand, and it's been testified now by both witnesses, that the proposed plan would not project further into the rear yard setback than the current existing non-conforming, that non-conformity of the house. But just for the record, there is essentially a piece of this new addition, two-story, that is roughly 9.1 feet wide and one and a half feet deep, that will be now in the rear yard, that is not currently in the rear yard. Is that fair?
That's fair, yes.
So that roughly we're talking about, what is it, 13 square feet or something like that?
That's, that's correct.
Now improved area that will be in the rear yard setback that's not there now?
That's fair.
Improved, but not impervious, because it's already impervious, yes.
Yep, yep, got it.
Yes.
That was going to be my point, there are some stairs there, there's some improvement, but it's not, not enclosed, that's certainly true.
Yeah, absolutely right.
I have no questions.
Jessica?
No questions.
Okay, I have no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd ask that the exhibits be moved into evidence.
They're admitted. Anything you'd like to add, Ari?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. With that, I'll ask if there's anyone present that received certified mail at wish to testify, anyone present that received regular mail, any other residents of Haverford Township? With that, we'll close the record on this case, and a decision will be rendered either this evening, in the event we're unable to do a decision this evening, one would be rendered at our next regularly scheduled meeting on February 6th. With that, we should go to recess, right? These guys are going to want to do decisions tonight. Yes, you want to do decisions tonight? All right, we're going to take a recess. Off the record, Jeff. We'll resume the meeting of the Haverford Township Zoning Hearing Board Thursday, January 16, 2025, with respect to Case Z24-41, Mina and Lala and Parakay Lala, owners of 106 North Trexel Avenue, and I won't read the rest of the description into the record unless somebody specifically requests that I do so. Jessica, are you prepared to vote?
I am.
Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes, I am.
Jessie?
Yes.
And so am I. Jessie, would you please take that decision?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with regards to Case Z24-41, I would vote to grant the request of relief with the following conditions. The deck will not be enclosed under the deck or on top, and electric will be the only utility. The project will be completed within one year and in accordance with the notes of testimony.
Bill?
I agree.
Ed?
I agree.
Jessica?
I disagree.
I agree, that application's approved 4-1 with those conditions. With respect to Case Z24-43, Nellie Smout. No, I'm, I'm, I think we'll hold this decision off until our February 6th hearing. Is everyone in agreement with that?
I am.
Yes.
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 All right. Mr. McGargy momentarily stepped out of the room, I presume, so. Suppose we'll wait for him. I'm not going to be in tomorrow, I'm going to be in downtown. Be there at 8:00 in the morning, so. Come on, Ed. Guess this is a prime example of when you got to go, you got to go, because he just went. I know. Marley wasn't typing together. Okay, with respect to Case Z25-01, Stephen Gunther and Leanne Caruso, owners of 721 Hathaway Lane, Ardmore, PA, and I won't read the rest of the description into the record unless somebody specifically requests that I do so. Jessica, are you prepared to vote?
I am.
Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
I am.
Jessie?
Yes.
And so am I. Jessica, would you please take that decision?
I would vote to approve the variance with the following condition, all work is to be completed within one year and in accordance with the notes of testimony.
Ed?
Which one is this, I'm sorry? I'm good. Yes, I agree.
Bill?
I agree.
Jessie?
I agree.
And so do I, that application's approved 5-0 with those conditions. Any minutes, any other administrative matters we need to address?
I know there's some outstanding, and I'm working to get them.
Thank you guys again for putting me back in as chairman. It interests me, the administrative aspects and procedures of the board, so I appreciate it.
Likewise, for another year of support.
Oh, you're a pretty good guy.
Yeah, we like working with you, Ari.
All right, nothing else, then we're adjourned.